Which one's that?
Just explaining what all the...
Oh, got you. Good morning. It is Wednesday, May 14th. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. We have all three commissioners present, our administrator, Mr. Danzel, and our clerk of the board. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join the pledge.
Hi, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just checking to make sure everybody has their phones on silent. I'm checking mine right now because I believe I don't have mine on silent. And at this time, I look for an adoption of the agenda. Mr. Danzel.
We are going to need to add an executive session sometime after 10:30 to allow for Mr. Sant to get here today. But we do need an executive session, and I think it'll be for at least a half hour.
Okay, all righty. Yes, sir.
I would also point out that item number seven on the consent agenda will need to be polled, and then I'll discuss further what we can do afterwards.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the agenda as presented with the exception of pulling item number seven from consent.
Second.
Been a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of pulling item number seven from consent, the contract with Tri-City Monitoring. All in favor, say aye.
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 Takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment? We don't have phones available, so. I don't see anybody come to the mic. Approval of consent agenda, which will be items one through six.
Move for approval of consent agenda items one through six as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion of second for the consent items one through six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Takes us down to regular business. Resolution 2025-0151 Temporary Hiring Freeze Presented by Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. This is a resolution that was requested based on the already discussed fact that we've been receiving about 15% less sales tax revenue than projected in the... Oh, no, in consecutive months. And the board had asked me to put together a list of ideas and thoughts that we could implement right now so that we are not trying to manage a situation if this trend continues. This temporary hiring freeze does allow for exceptions. The way that that would work is that the folks that are seeking an exception to the rule would have put in writing to the Board of Commissioners a justification as to why the position's still needed and what would negatively be impacted if we didn't fill that position. And so I think what this does, it accomplishes everything that we want, which is to, right now, do a pause so that we can see what our finances are, while at the same time allowing for you gentlemen to approve necessary hires.
Discussion?
I think it's a good idea to get ahead of it now. Like I said, we can always alter the course if we need to. But with revenue being down, I would rather take measures now than wait until it's drastic and have to make drastic changes, so I'm in favor of it.
So, I didn't see an ending date on this, so it would stay in effect until the board took action to take it out of effect?
That is correct, sir.
No more questions for me.
I think it's a wise move in order for us to keep our balance books going on. We better get in front of this thing, so I think it's a wise move at this point. We're not stopping any hiring, especially if you come to the Board of Commissioners and you can still get somebody if you're in desperate need. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-0151 as presented.
Second.
Been a motion of second for Resolution 2025-0151 Temporary Hiring Freeze. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Takes us down to regular business, item number two, Resolution 2025-0149 Closed Record Appeal and Closed Record Public Hearing, quasi judicial. And I believe I'm going to ask Mr. McCart to come forward. So at this time, I will open the closed record hearing appeal and on the Underwood Planned Unit Development. Have any members of the board had any ex parte communications that they need to disclose? Or is there any reason for any member of the board to recuse themselves from taking part in this decision? If they need to recuse themselves, they must leave the room during the hearing. Commissioner Mullen, have you reviewed the entire record prior to this hearing today?
Yes.
Commissioner Mullen, or Commissioner Baumann, same?
I've reviewed the entire record.
And I have too. And not to get out of order here, but I just would like to state the fact that on the already completed development of the Underwood, on Frazier Road, I was contracted by them to widen the borrow pit. My guy that works for me did it. I had no communication with him. He did all the communicating. But I have had an engagement with Underwoods as far as doing work for them on the already, the piece that is already in development. It shows it in there, so I have had that. Have you had any ex parte communication with this?
I have not.
No.
Okay. There is no public testimony or staff presentation. I will now ask the appellant to present their case. As a reminder, the appellant may only address items in the record. Items will be, will not be added to the record, nor will arguments that were not previously presented in the record. The commissioners may ask clarifying questions of the appellant.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mark Fickes, F-I-C-K-E-S. My address is 405 East Lincoln Avenue in Yakima. As you know, I'm a land use and real estate attorney representing the applicant in this case. I participated, you should have seen my name in the record. I participated and helped present to the Planning Commission at the open record hearing the combined PUD with a plat. Again, it's not too complicated. It's just a normal 123 lot plat on 152 acres. This is a PUD similar to ones you've approved in the recent past, including on the Kohler Estates matter. The only thing a little bit unusual here today is, again, out of a belt and suspenders approach, on behalf of the client, we felt we had to appeal one minor issue with the Planning Commission recommendation. As you know, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the PUD and plat, but they included a condition that our client doesn't think is appropriate and fair based on the facts and records. Specifically, we are asking the commissioners to adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, but with one minor modification, to change an approval condition that was both in the SEPA determination and the conditions of approval, requiring a full-blown archaeological survey. I don't know if that means anything to you, but basically, an archaeological survey is a... takes about three to four months and $15,000 to $20,000, and is a complex survey that looks for archaeological relics that could slow up construction. The reason we don't think that's appropriate, you know, spoiling the surprise on this record, if you've reviewed it, is this application was modified in the middle of the process, and all the excavation, all the lots, all the development is going to occur only on the uplands area where Richard and Leslie Underwood, who are my clients, have been farming. There simply is no need to do a full-blown archaeological survey if it's not involving the shoreline area along the Columbia River or the shrub step environment. You know, while not every inch of ground has been farmed, they certainly, you know, the soil has been disturbed over multiple years. And by the way, as somebody, I do this all the time, and I don't know how many applications this body reviews, but the Colville Tribe and sometimes the Historical and Archaeological Preservation Society simply sends out form letters every time they get a SEPA notice. You could be in the middle of Pasco and they'll ask for a full-blown archaeological survey. Again, while this development is admittedly closer to the Columbia River, it is all going to occur on the uplands. So that's basically spoiling the merits of my case. I do have one, you know, legal issue that's probably more for Jeff Briggs, and I'm just going to mention it. I don't think this is going to get into the courts or any judicial appeal, but I do think the county's ordinances may need some technical updates and be technically illegal. You have some unusual appeal provisions, both in your PUD, your rezoning, your subdivision ordinance, that require, the way I'm reading it, require appeals to be made from a Planning Commission recommendation. Your citizens and applicants should not have to file appeals when you are the decision-making bodies of a recommendation. That's, you know, I do this land use up and down the valley, and this is the only ordinance that has those. And where I think it runs into problems with state law is under regulatory reform, you can only have one open record hearing and one closed record appeal. Now, I think the county's done a good job on this case where I'm going to make comments both on the appeal, and it's consolidated with a hearing on the merits. So I think we're in technical compliance, but forcing an applicant to spend money, spend money on an attorney, file an appeal just to modify a condition that's not final, seems inappropriate to me. I'm sorry.
And I might just put a warning out there, this is a closed record hearing, and we're supposed to stay within the boundaries of this. And I don't know if we're on the verge of getting outside that, but I think we're fine. But we need to stay focused on this closed record hearing.
I will. And again, I just make it, I'll move on. So, again, the main reason I prepared the attached to the appeal sheet is a notice of appeal. Basically, we're asking the archaeological survey condition to be removed because, again, it hasn't been required by the county on other developments. And Mr. Peter Harpster, the project manager for the Underwoods, will speak to that. Again, this is all on the record. All excavation and development is going to be on the uplands. And we're asking, we're not asking to ignore completely the prospect of archaeological sensitive areas, but the way it's normally handled is through an independent discovery plan or protocol. And our clients, it's where we advise our contractors of the rules and regulations if they do happen to run into something that's unusual during excavation. And that's the way the city of Pasco and I think the county's handled that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That's all for the appeal. The appeal is really part of the approval process itself. I think your outside planner, Nicole Stickney, did a really good job, and there's a good presentation. We have absolutely no problems with her staff report and her recommended conditions of approval. I actually think the chairman of the Planning Commission was struggling with, would have probably approved a modification, but he didn't know how to modify the motion. You know, you get late at night, and you get to the end of the meeting, and he couldn't do it. So anyways, that's on the appeal. On the application itself, I'm not going to bore you and remove it. We agree with all these staff's findings and conclusions. They've applied your general criteria in your planned unit development ordinance. And all the planned unit development in this case is a plat with trading some open space for a slightly increased density. This will be similar to other plats you've been reviewed. So unless you have any questions, the Underwoods would appreciate the commissioners' consideration and are ready to break ground and would simply request that the unanimous recommendation of the planning staff be approved with a modification of substituting the archaeological survey condition for one that only requires the independent discovery plan. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And Mr. Harpster would like to say a few words because he's more familiar with the facts of the application.
We'll stay with questions. Is there questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Fickes, for sharing that. Who would be subject to the IDP, the Inadvertent Discovery Protocol on this project? Would the...
The general contractor and probably project manager, you know, anybody conducting...
So the home builder would not be subject to it?
No, the home builder would not. It would be, it would have gone beyond that stage. By the time the plat infrastructure, where they, when our client comes in for a final plat after the roads, curbs, gutters, sidewalks are in, the builders would not be subject to that. It wouldn't, it's normally only addressed to the project manager or the general contractor conducting the, you know, building the infrastructure.
Okay, and so then if we were to require a full archaeological survey, irregardless of the findings, would the, would the contractor that builds the subdivision still only be, be the only one subject to that inadvertent, or the survey and its findings?
No, they're mutually exclusive. The problem with the archaeological survey is you can't turn dirt until it's done. It's got to be completely done. So, you know, I can't tell whatever the, if there were some findings or some sensitive areas, they, there could be setbacks and exclusions from that. I'm not an expert on all. I didn't review all the WACS and regulations on archaeological finds. But in terms of the survey, they're usually, you don't, you don't do an independent discovery plan if you do a full-blown survey. They've already basically, what the survey does, it says what areas are that are fine for excavation and what areas aren't. It is, and it's still relatively rare to find items during the survey, but it's an intensive process that only a few people can do, and it's expensive and time-consuming.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Harpster?
Morning, Commissioners. Peter Harpster, Harpster Land Development, 5804 Road 90 in Pasco. Here today representing the applicant, Mr. Underwood. First off, I do want to thank Mr. McCart and his staff for their time on this application. HBL, the contract planner for the county, I think did the majority of the workload during a time when there was 100% turnover in the planning department. And so we're certainly appreciative to be here today. Just only, I think it's only been four or five weeks since we had the Planning Commission meeting, which is about half the timeline that we used to experience. As Mr. Fickes said, I won't repeat everything he said that you've likely already read in the record, but one thing I did want to bring attention to that was mentioned is that the, this project area is in the rural shoreline development area, which is situated along the river north of the city Pasco's UGA. That's really the only area in the entire county that's suitable for planned unit developments. And so there's been one PUD application you've approved before. One was recently submitted, and then this one before you today. And other than that, there are not going to be very many more opportunities for the county to build developments over 10 to 15 lots. And so it's important, I think, for this board to approve this project based on the fact that this would be a good opportunity to increase the county's tax base and help implement and meet several housing goals that are found in the comprehensive plan. One thing that I wanted to mention regarding the, you know, with the PUD, I forget the exact wording of the requirement, but there's four requirements you need to meet for a PUD to be approved. One of them is suitability with the area surrounding the site. And the PUD zoning technically would have allowed us to build 183 lots. Instead of doing that, we increased the average lot size to around three-quarters of an acre, and that got us to the 123 lots that you see before you today. That then takes the average lot size to actually bigger than some of the subdivisions in the area, including the one just north of this. And then, as Mr. Fickes mentioned, we've got, this is a lengthy staff report, and we have no issues with any of the conditions of approval, findings of fact, or mitigation measures except for the archaeological survey. As mentioned, there'll be no development. And there was a map that I submitted to the Planning Commission, I believe was included in the record, that kind of showed a hatched area and red of what will not be disturbed or developed to any extent. And then, as mentioned, the remaining area of the property's been farmed. I would mention a few projects where we've had a similar situation like this, where that kind of template form letter was submitted during the SEPA comment period by either DAP or one of the tribes. And for the Plateau at River Ranch, Kohler Estates, Kohler PUD, Underwood Estates, River Crest Estates, and Columbia Bluff, that same letter with the same request by DAP was submitted. Some of those projects, the requirement for an IDP was, or excuse me, for an archaeological survey was not even considered, and instead, an IDP was put in place from the beginning. For the most recent one, I believe it was the Plateau at River Ranch, at the Planning Commission meeting, staff had, Mr. Bratton at the time, had asked to require...
That was not brought up in the record.
Okay, so if it wasn't brought up in the record, we cannot discuss it.
I did mention all the previous projects that did not have an archaeological survey. So, and that's in the record that was included in the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting. So the, it's procedure a little weird that there was no presentation, so we've not been able to see the suggested motion. But essentially, it would read something like this. What we would ask today is that the motion would read something like, "I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve application PUD 2024-01, deleting the condition of approval and SEPA condition number two, requiring an archaeological survey, replacing it with a condition requiring an inadvertent discovery plan to be in place prior to the commencement of construction." That summarizes, finishes my comments. We would also ask, as the appellant, that we have the opportunity at the end to respond to any statements or comments from staff that are made after our presentation. Happy to answer any questions, authority.
Questions, Commissioners?
How long has this property been farmed?
For several decades, but I don't know exactly how long. For at least the last 45 years or so, since the 70s.
And nothing's ever been found?
Correct.
I believe this, this ground was brought into the area South Columbia Basin Irrigation Project first because they pumped right out of the river. Then they brought the stuff down from the north where I currently farm. So I'd say it's been 50 years.
And that's block one?
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll ask the appellant if they have any further items to present. The defendant. I'm trying to find my, okay, the commissioners may ask, okay, so I am now asking the defendant in this case, the county staff, to present their defense.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've prepared several notes here that I'll go over, and I'll try and read off the script so I don't stray too far. There seems to be some confusion on exactly what is being appealed since there are two different statements in the record regarding SEPA. Condition, the PC condition on page 15, bullet five, attached to the appeal, says a professional archaeological survey is required before construction can begin. The SEPA DNS mitigation measure two states a professional archaeological survey is required before construction can begin. Exception within that portion of the project nearest the Columbia River, marked as phase four on the application's submittal, the survey does not need to include the land which is below the elevation 450 feet or within Track H area unless land disturbance is planned. Following that, an inadvertent discovery protocol shall be in place. On appeal, on the appeal document you have in your file, page two, line 24 to 35, the appellants are appealing only the recommended condition of approval contained in the staff report.
Would you tell me where that's at in the packet?
So in the appeal document itself, that was presented by the attorney, right behind the application for appeal, it's in the smaller folder.
Which page was it?
Page two.
Okay.
So that's this document.
Okay.
On page two, and I'm just kind of going off of what was written in the appeal, so I knew what to argue. The appellants are only appealing a recommendation, the condition of the staff report, which refers to bullet 15. Even if the B O C C were to remove the recommendation, the mitigation measure in the SEPA DNS still applies, and the applicant would be required to do a limited archaeological survey and have an IDP in place, as stated previously. I do not agree that the current appeal of the PDC condition is filed timely per... I do agree that the PC condition was filed timely per the appeal under Code 1784 and 1620. Appellants are not clear in challenging mitigation measure two, requiring the limited archaeological survey, have an IDP in place. This condition was done under RCW 43 dash, or excuse me, 4321C, which is SEPA, and Title 18.04 of R Code. I only point that difference out because I will admit those two things should have been consistent and were not presented that way by contract staff. The SEPA DNS with eight mitigation measures, the decision was signed on March 20th by myself as the responsible official. Per the code, as the department director, I am the responsible SEPA official. The comment and appeal period for the threshold determination ended on April 14th, 14 days after the decision. Applicants made no comments and did not file an appeal during that timeline of the SEPA condition. WAC 197-11-5452, effects of no comment. Other agencies and the public, lack of comment by other agencies or members of the public on environmental documents within the time period specified by these rules shall be construed as lack of objection to the environmental analysis. If the requirement of WAC 197-11-510 are met, the last WAC I mentioned, 510, is the public notice, and you have an affidavit of public notice in your record. That's basically to say that we did not receive any comments from the applicant during the SEPA, official SEPA comment period. All the comments we received were at the Planning Commission level. All the comments we received were at the planning commission level. WAC one ninety-seven eleven six eighty-three A eight states that, "Agencies shall provide procedural determinations made by the responsible official, shall be entitled substantial weight." That also is referred to as RCW forty-three twenty-one C oh-seven-five-three D. On appeal document, so back to the same document, page three, line three through five, "The appellant challenges the archaeological survey in its recommendation based on the record because it is not supported by facts or law, and/or involves clearly erroneous actions for one or more of the following." Depellent states on page three, two-point-one, "Depellent's project does not involve any construction or soil disturbance in the shoreline, ridges, or shrub-step environment near the river, and all construction will occur, will be occurring on portions of the property where soil has already been disturbed, from the appellant's longtime farming operations." Please look at the aerial view, so in your small packet. There's this aerial view of the project, and there's also the plat, there's three pages of it. These were part of the record. As you can see, so if you look at this, there, as you can see, there are multiple lots in phase eight, lots one oh-two through one twelve, lots sixty-eight and seventy, and Road H appear to be where there's no farming, or portions of lots appear to have no farming. Also, if you look at the upper part up here, along here, lots one through seven, and parts of the private road appear on land that was not farmed or disturbed. Appellent's project includes all lands that are being platted, not just where roads are proposed. WAC one seventy-nine eleven oh-six oh-four C states, "Agencies shall carefully consider the range of probable impacts, including short-term and long-term effects. Impacts shall include those that are likely to arise or exist over the lifetime of the proposal, or depending on the particular proposal, longer. This project is to create one hundred and twenty-three residential lots with community open space. Construction of single-family homes, septic systems, and most smaller outbuildings are except, exempt from SEPA on their own. Per that WAC just quoted, the project clearly is intended to be developed for homes, driveways, garages, landscaping of homes, septic systems, water lines to the homes, et cetera, and we are required to look at the project in whole, not at part of, parts, to avoid environmental review." That's also supported by WAC one ninety-seven eleven oh-six oh-sub-five. "The planned unit development is in common, is a combination subdivision and zoning change. This affects, the effects of this project have not gone through prior review, hence the SEPA review now." When you do a rezone change, that's what, one of the reasons that it kicks in to the SEPA. We have several comments in the record from the Colville Tribe and the Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation, from December of twenty twenty-four through April of twenty twenty-five, requesting a cultural resource survey. Those are in your packet, also in the short folder. These were not merely form letters. These comments were, are also before and after lots were reconfigured to be outside of the shoreline jurisdiction. WAC one seventy, one ninety-seven eleven three fifty-five states, "Agencies may clarify or change features of their own proposal, or may specify mitigation measures in their DNS as a result of comments by other agencies, or the public, or as a result of additional agency planning." That goes on to basically state, "We are adding this archaeological survey based on very specific comments in the record from the tribes, not merely a form letter." WAC one seventy-nine eleven oh-six oh-four A, "Impacts," states, "SEPA procedural provisions require the consideration of environmental, emphasis on environmental impacts, with attention to impacts that are likely, not merely speculative." I would point out that the housing, the septic systems, the development, the landscaping are all not speculative. That is the intent of this entire project. WAC one seventy-nine eleven four-four-four two B VI lists historic and cultural preservation as one of the environmental elements we must consider. WAC one ninety-seven eleven three thirty-three E I states, "In determining an impact significance, the responsible official shall take into account the following: that the proposal may, to a significant degree, adversely affect environmentally sensitive or special areas, such as loss or destruction of historic, scientific, and cultural resources, prime, parks primes, farmlands, wetlands, wild and scenic rivers, and wilderness." Pertinent on cultural resources and historic resources here. "The mitigation measures required a limited archaeological survey and IDP was made on facts of law and rule, direct comments in the record, looking at the amount of undisturbed land that will likely be impacted by this PUD at full development, and the high likelihood that cultural resources exist in the area." Appeal document, page three, lines eleven through fourteen, which is the two-point-two, "The county has not required full-blown archaeological, cultural resource surveys on other similar situated residential documents, developments in the area, and has instead allowed owners, applicants, the less intrusive option of utilizing an inadvertent discovery plan or protocol during construction or projects." Both the attorney and Mr. Harpster both referred to that in their testimony just a few minutes ago. My reply to that is, "Each project requiring SEPA must stand on its own merits. Failure to comply with the law is not an excuse to follow the law in the future or the present." Appeal document three, lines fifteen through eighteen, which is two-point-three in the arguments, "Appellant presented facts at an open public hearing justifying the use of an inadvertent discovery protocol during construction, instead of a time-consuming expensive archaeological survey of land that already has been disturbed by, during farming Comments in the open public hearing from Mr. Fix, sorry if I mispronounced your name, included a statement that disturbance was only going to occur on land already farmed. A direct quote from the YouTube was, "No dirt will be turned inside the shoreline or in any critical area. Basically being farmed is where development will occur." Farming alone is not an exemption from doing an archaeological survey. There are many aspects, including types of tillage, crop types grown, soil types, that all play into the amount of land disturbance that occurs. None of this information was presented to refute the fact that there is a high probability of cultural resources in the area, as stated by the Colville Tribes and DAP, in multiple email communications, as well as in their letters. Further, this project does not include, does include lands where farming did not occur. Mr. Harpser turned in documents, I'll ask that you pull these out of your main folder. So they're behind the large packet, and it's titled PC testimony exhibits. And it's this map right here. It has the red on it. It's the one that's kind of folded. Okay? He wanted to state on the record that no dirt will be turned during construction of the project, and pointed to the red area on the plat map that shows areas that were not farmed. So the red was presented as areas that had not previously been farmed. Clearly, the private road between phases three and four is shown going over the red. That's this area right here. This is the undisturbed areas as presented in the testimony by Mr. Harpser at the planning commission. It has not all been farmed. Further, there are several lots in phase three, four, and eight that contains areas that were not farmed. This document refutes his own testimony that, and that of Mr. Fix. Both Mr. Fix and Mr. Harpser brought up past history IDPs, which I addressed previously. It was stated by contract staff at the PC hearing that the planning commission could not change the mitigation measures of the DNS, the SEPA DNS determination and the mitigation measures there, made by the responsible official. However, they could make a recommendation to the responsible official to reconsider and/or change the mitigation measure number two regarding the limited archaeological study. The planning commission members did not, did discuss the archaeological survey versus doing just an IDP, but they made no recommendation regarding the subject. They made only the emotion to recommend approval of the PUD project with four findings of fact and ten conditions of approval, per the planning commission minutes. After the PC meeting, as the responsible official, I did go back and review whether or not an archaeological survey was prudent considering all the facts in the record, and concluded that mitigation measure number two, as stated in the SEPA DNS, should remain. This is largely due to looking at the entire project, which is the home development that's going to occur in undisturbed areas, as well as, as the farm ground. It also does exclude those areas of the shoreline and Track H, where there is no planned development to occur at all. WAC one ninety-seven eleven three forty, three forty F states that, "The responsible official shall reconsider the DNS based on timely comments, and may retain or modify the DNS, or if the responsible official determines that significant adverse impacts are likely, withdraw the DNS and supporting documents. When the DNS is modified, the lead agency shall send the modified DNS to agencies with Again, I did reconsider the DNS with mitigation measures as the SEPA responsible official. If the, and I did go over this with staff, and I'd also went over this with the contract staff. If the, if the county commissioners change the SEPA condition, all commenting agencies shall be required to be notified. I would recommend that the PC condition, as stated on page fifteen, bullet five, be changed or modified to be verbatim what's in the mitigation measure two in the SEPA, for consistency, and that the board not modify SEPA measure two. I also will further say that I, I believe that the project should go forward in approval. I have no reason to believe it should not, as the PC recommended. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Commissioners may ask questions at this time of the defendant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McCart, question about mitigation measure number two, just clarifying language. I'll read it in full. "A professional archaeological survey is required before construction can begin. Exception within the portion of the project nearest the Columbia River marked as phase four on the application submitted. The survey does not need to include the land which is below the elevation four fifty or within the Track H area unless land disturbance is planned. Following that, inadvertent discovery protocol shall be in place." So the nexus of my question is, back to the map that shows the, the red marks, the only portion that the archaeological survey would need to cover is the portion where it crosses Track H with the private road. Outside of that, there would no, the archaeological survey would not need to require phase four or anything outside of that private road.
No, sir. It would be the entire project with the exception of Track H and the shoreline area, which is outside of any platted lands. So it would include the entire plat, with the exception of those, those lands that are in the shoreline jurisdiction. So if you see, there's a straight line about, I want to say about three-quarters of an inch in on phase four-
It would be the western edge of lots one through seven.
Yep, along the Columbia River. So everything outside of the platted lots would not need to be done, as well as Track H. My understanding is there's planned to be absolutely no development there, with the exception of where Road H, or the, excuse me, the private road will cross.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that I asked for clarification on that. And then, would you describe again the process that I believe that you proposed, as far as it would not need to stop this process from moving forward? It would only have to be done by the time construction started?
That is correct.
Thank you.
May I be recognized by the board?
Yes.
Jeff Briggs here with the prosecutor's office, just a point of clarification on behalf of the county. I just wanted to clarify that, I believe it's the county's position, and Wes, correct me if I'm wrong, that we are not taking the position that this appeal is not ripe, and that, more specifically, that when the, when the appellant appeals a condition of a permit under SEPA, that that, that is proper, under our code and under the SEPA appeals, and that's actually required by, by the rules, as pointed out by Mr. Fickers. The applicant is entitled to just one closed record appeal and one open record appeal, and so, under both the SEPA rules and the regulatory reform rules. So we are not challenging whether this appeal is right.
That is correct.
Thank you.
The, the applicant requested the opportunity to, I guess you would say rebut. Is that proper in this process?
Yes.
I believe it is.
And I would like to just clarify that that line that you referred to is the two-hundred-foot shoreline jurisdictional line.
That's correct.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Commissioners, again, I respect Mr. McCart's legal analysis. He obviously spent a lot of time on municipal research services, but I, I do have a couple disagreements with him on the law and the facts. Again, again, just for the record, I do think that Mr. McCart's testimony went substantially beyond the record. Ms. Stickney that presented the SEPA findings, which are not final at the planning commission hearing, did not mention any of the, the items that Mr. McCart went through today. Also, it's, we're, we're at an extreme disadvantage, not having a packet that we could review and rebut. You know, again, most of what Mr. McCart said was accurate in terms of, I'm very familiar with the SEPA regulations and the appeal, but you have a unique ordinance. He cited, "There is no other way to challenge a SEPA condition other than what was done in this case." And remember, the planning commission does not make a decision. You do. Your SEPA appeals ordinance, and, and again, we, we struggled, and Mr. McCart was helping Mr. Harpster, and just finding how to appeal this, what the fees are, and you have inconsistent provisions, but I'm citing Franklin County Code eighteen oh-four two-eight oh. This, these are your SEPA appeal ordinance. It says, "Except for permits and variances issued pursuant to RCW ninety fifty-eight, when any nonexemption, quote, 'not requiring a decision of the county commissioners,' is conducted," then there's an appeal provision. an appeal provision. I'm sort of flabbergasted that Mr. McCart seems to be saying that there is absolutely no way to challenge a SEPA condition where we did object to it both at the Planning Commission level and at this level. I think you do have the authority. I don't think the SEPA determination is absolutely final. Again, your SEPA appeal provisions and ordinance are difficult to follow, but we've appealed it in the only way that your ordinance allows, and I don't think it's a distinction without a difference whether it's in the condition of approval or the SEPA. The SEPA was not final, just you used the optional DNS process at the Planning Commission. So, I think you do have the authority to ask to modify that condition, whether it's a condition of approval or in the SEPA. So, again, you know, if the Planning Commission was making a decision, it would be a different result. But I think where you're making a decision, this is the only opportunity the applicant had. You know, I don't have an opportunity since we weren't presenting any packet or arguments, I can't go and cite legal briefs, but I disagree with Mr. McCart's characterization that we did not appeal properly. We did the only thing we could and, again, we're gonna, I'll let Mr. Harpster who's more familiar with the maps and the factual background, and this one's a weird one to me, but I will make one point factually. This, and I think Commissioner Baumann, you may have been getting into what doesn't make sense to me as a factual matter. The SEPA condition that Mr. McCart seems to be citing is saying you do the full-blown archaeological survey on all the areas you've already disturbed, but you don't have to do them where they're likely to be found in Track H and on the below 450. I would have flipped it the exact other way if I were gonna require that, but yeah, has every inch of ground on this farm been farmed? No, no farmer. There are gonna be roads, there's gonna be little patches of uneven ground, but that doesn't mean you're likely to find archaeologically significant areas on that. Again, requiring the entire project to be walked and surveyed where it's been farmed for 50 years is frankly, factually ridiculous. But, again, we've done everything we could. The applicants would still like the commissioners to approve the project without that. Again, I respect the diligence that your planning staff has used in being SEPA responsible official, but this is, again, weird procedurally, weird legally to me. So, again, I think you do have the discretion to modify that condition and we've appealed it the only way that the law and your ordinance allows. Thank you.
Mr. Harpster.
Mr. Harpster, have anything more to say? So, Mr. McCart, anything more to say?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying they don't have a right to challenge that. I just want to make that clear.
I appreciate that because all you're doing is giving us, trying to keep us commissioners in good standing and I appreciate that. Mr. Baumann?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if MRSC is where you analyzed wherever it was, I appreciate you doing that. And, you know, the MRSC is a wealth of information and guidance for us and wherever you sought the information to be as thorough as you are, I certainly appreciate and want you to know that.
And all the WACs that were referred to are the Washington Administrative Code, which is for the executive branch of the government, which we are part of as we are the legislative and the executive branch, so that's why it pertains to us. So, usually, this will end the appeal argument phase unless there is an item presented from the record not brought up in the original argument. If they have a new item to argue in the record, each side gets another turn, but I don't have that, anything of that sort in front of me at this time. So, the board will now move into discussion and deliberation, knowing that we can't go back at this time. We can't go back and ask questions of either the appellant or the defendant, so time for discussion.
So, discussion only, I can't ask a question?
It's required, it's, we're not supposed to go back and ask questions. We're just, unless we don't move to that phase yet, if there's a question you want to ask of either, we should probably do that before we move into this next phase of discussion. That bridge been crossed? That bridge has been crossed, so it's just us discussing at this time.
I'll just make a comment about what my question would have been is, in mitigation measure number two, it, the survey does not need to include the land area which is below the elevation of 450 feet. And the assumption that I have, which I wanted clarification to, is the map that we have that's marked in red, that that demarcation is the 450-feet line because I didn't see anything that provided that information to me. So, that's what I'll have to do is assume that that's what that identifies.
One question I would have for my fellow commissioners is, and I guess, Mr. Briggs, you'd be in on this too, is there a way to move forward with the exception of areas Phase Eight, Phase Four, and Phase Three? Could we allow them with the exception of those only being of the SEPA, of this archaeological findings?
You're saying you want to approve it with different conditions?
With a condition that these are susceptible to those archaeological, because they are the areas that are marked in red, I put them in yellow and they are purposely set aside. I would like to try to make this moving forward.
You need to have findings. Now, the applicant has said that the reason why there's no need for the archaeological study there is because there's no land disturbance. I think what Wes has indicated on the other hand is, although there's no land disturbance now, it's foreseeable under SEPA because you're not only looking at the consequences today, but SEPA also tells the agency you have to look at the foreseeable consequences of the development itself, which could possibly entail consequences tomorrow. And it seems unlikely that when you put houses on the lots, that they will remain in perpetuity tumbleweeds abutting the streams, that people will put lawns and terraced those properties, those lots, and that they won't be tumbleweeds forever. And so, would it be then, is there a nexus, in other words, between the condition which is required under Nolan and Dolan, right, of the condition of the approval and what you're requiring, you know, potentially, yeah? I think you probably could require it.
The reason being is, as Ms. McCart stated, that roadway goes right through Track H, which is undisturbed. And then, we've got lots one through seven and 112, 102 through 112 that all have these areas in red.
Wes?
Can we ask Wes this?
Yeah, sure. We're in appeals, right? So, we're in 1460, is that right? 1480.
So, Mr. Chairman, could I expand on your question?
Absolutely.
So, could we, could we ask, in the spirit of the chairman's thought of not preventing forward progress, but still staying within the needs, if we were to strike a line from Lot 11 to Lot 13 and say that an IDP to the east of that line and then a, the limited archaeological survey as staff recommends be done to the west of that?
Mr. Danzel.
Just an inquiry here. I believe that the only, that what you can do today in this hearing is approve as recommended, approve with modification or removal of the conditions of findings or fact, or deny the application. So, I, this is just my opinion, I guess I'd like Jeff to weigh in on this, Council Briggs. I believe that what you're gonna want to do is either approve, you know, make a motion to approve what the staff presented to you, which would be four findings of fact, 10 recommended conditions, with the exception being that they stick with the SEPA mitigation measure two. And if you're looking to otherwise make a motion what Mr. Harpster had recommended, it would be everything I just said except for instead of using the archaeological study, it would be the exception of changing the condition related to using an individual discovery plan or development plan. I believe that's.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and again, this is the benefit of not having, I guess, the non-benefit of not having a packet, the danger of not having one, but I believe we're in 1480-060, subparagraph E, is that correct? We're on a procedure of a closed record appeal, which reads, "The appeal body shall determine whether there is substantial evidence in the administrative record to support the decision of the hearing body. The appeal body may affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the hearing body upon written agreement of, by the applicant, to waive the requirement for a decision within the time periods set forth under," and that's the Local Project Review Act. The appeal body may remand the decision for additional information.
So, that was, that's my question, I guess, is, is that an appropriate way to modify what my question was? It says we may accept, deny, or modify.
And it circles back to whether there's substantial evidence in the record to support the decision of the body.
So, Mr. McCart, is there substantial evidence in the record? Basically, what my question is, and if I didn't articulate it appropriately, that we put an IDP on the farmed area only and the area that is outside of the farmed area would require the limited archaeological survey?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna answer that with a statement that's basically, Commissioner, that is your determination with the findings of, you'd have to come up with a finding of fact to support that. If that's what you wanted to do, I believe a modification of that way could be made. However, you would still have to, because you are changing the SEPA at all, the condition, we would have to notify all the commenting entities. That's gonna happen if you change it whatsoever, but whatever way you change it, I believe that's procedurally within your purview, based on findings of fact, that you will need to enter into the rector to support that.
So, a modification of SEPA requires the process essentially to start over? And about how long would that process be?
If you, if you, my understanding is that, and this is where maybe Jeff would be in a better position to answer this than I would, but you are the decision body. I have to do the notification if you change it as a responsible official. However, I'm not 100% sure on any commenting or notice there, other than the fact that from this point on, once you make the decision, it would be a LUPA challenge. But again, I would defer to Mr. Briggs on that piece.
Thank you. And would that apply if we modified it or if we accepted the appeal? Would that condition apply, that the agencies would all have to be notified in?
Any change that would affect the mitigation measures that were signed on the March 20th would require re-notification of the agencies and the commenting entities.
How about this? Let's leave the hearing open with the agreement of the applicant if they're okay with that for one week and we come back and hopefully we can sort this out between now and then. Is that okay? Okay. Can we get an agreement on the record?
Just.
Mr. Danzel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our meeting next week is at night. It's at 7:00 PM. I just wanted to, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
Sorry about that. I didn't know it was a night meeting, but.
Remote access available.
I think the last time we discussed this was at a night meeting and I think, would you be okay to come back at that time? And so, it'd be more than one week. It'd be one week and about maybe eight hours.
Is that okay if you come back for a night meeting?
I think that would give us time to, you know, look into this because the red areas are critical areas for archaeological digs, so I would think that we need to maybe modify this because I would hate to see us stop the.
Mr. Fickers is a pretty creative guy. We might have a solution here that.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you please advise us on our actions or lack thereof between now and then?
Right. I would like, first off, to get something, because a nod isn't gonna be very good on the record, something orally from the applicant, just saying they agree to continue it so it at least meets our code.
Yes, we would certainly agree to continue it a week or two weeks. And that'd give us time to kind of prepare some information. The one clarification I wanted to make was the area hatched in red is what will not be disturbed by the development.
I understand that. I was trying to correlate that to the 450-foot elevation mark.
And that would give us time to get with our engineer to provide a very accurate exhibit that shows maybe favorable boundaries that all parties would agree on.
So, my question was, so I've already been told that I can't ask that question, but them providing that is adding new information into the record.
Right. Our record's closed. The record gets established by the Planning Commission.
So, this is why my question is, am I, I know how to get that information, but that's improper of me to go find that on my own?
Right. I don't know that we can have a survey or provide an updated document. I think that might violate the.
My question to you, Mr. Briggs, is at the point we're into this right now in this closed record hearing, are we violating it going back for more discussion a week later?
No, I mean, we're leaving the hearing open. The hearing's closed. The record's closed, but the hearing can be open.
Okay. But then, can we entertain more interaction from the appellant?
No, I think we're, I mean, we're leaving the hearing open, but we have to, because of the OPMA, once we, you know, close the meeting, we have to wait until the next meeting to, you know.
So, I will scour the packet and the appeal and see if I can.
Mr. Danzel.
I have a question for legal counsel. Say they do that in a week's time, isn't it gonna still be the same scrutiny? The level of scrutiny as far as why they're departing from mitigation measure two? I guess I just don't know what a week will do.
It'll give us some more time to think about it and discuss.
Mark Fickers, Mr. Danzel. I don't think we can take any new additional information, but there seems to be some, frankly, I was a little surprised by Mr. McCart's presentation, and I think you can take information from legal counsel on what the authority is of the commissioners to modify it. I understand your comments and are we here is the only choice? We can't modify it or we can? Or can we, can the commissioners compromise? And I think they have more authority when they're making the decision. This just isn't a SEPA appeal. It is also a closed record hearing on the merits of the plat. I think the commissioners, I'd be happy to exchange legal information with your county attorney. I don't think it's appropriate for anybody to do more research or make factual comments or arguments, but we seem to be, and by the way, this is difficult even for a land use attorney. I was a little, again, a little surprised, but given a week, we may be able to, I'd like an opportunity to present some information to your attorney for his comment on what, why we're here, either, you know, and by the way, if the procedure is we can't make any modifications at this stage, you have some issues on your ordinance that I think are materially unfair. And again, we don't want to have to raise them in a loop appeal and I don't know whether the client, the delay would be appropriate, but I see this as just allowing a week to, for legal counsel to exchange information about what the discretion of the commissioners discretion of the commissioners is. We might, we might disagree. We might be here in the exact same thing.
Worked, we've worked together before and worked
Yeah.
two solutions, so.
I have before the commissioners, the, you know, I think that they have the ability to, to do the motion that you would like to have done today, and they have the ability to adopt the motion that I think the staff has recommended. So I think they could do that today. I'm not worried about the, whether they have the ability to do so. I don't know what the time's going to do, but it's up to you gentlemen.
So, Mr. Briggs, if we were to recess from this, would you advise the commissioners, they, no interaction, we need to stay right where we're at right today? You're going to get the council from, or you're going to talk with their legal and advise us at the next meeting?
Right, right. Keep in mind, this is the one that started as an, as an appeal. So we've, I mean, we've worked before on it, so.
Okay. So at this time, we'll recess until next week on this closed record hearing.
So, so, Mr. Commissioner?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I would recommend that you actually make a motion to continue the deliberation hearing, phase of the hearing, until a date certain and time, or at least a date.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to modify our agenda to continue this hearing, this closed record hearing, to Wednesday, the 21st, at a time to be determined that day.
Isn't the meeting at seven?
Yes.
So I modify my motion. I move to continue this hearing to Wednesday, May the 21st, at our 7:00 PM Commissioners Meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to move this closed record hearing to May 21st, correct?
Correct.
At 7:00 PM. Has been a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. That moves us down to, and I want to thank Mr. McCart for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Never got this kind of thorough before, and I appreciate Mr. McCart and his hard work.
Absolutely.
So with that, Commissioner Administrative, Administrator, Administrator Updates. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As you know, a couple of weeks back, I had asked Auditor Beaton for help in developing some strategies for dealing with the sales tax revenue issues that we've discussed, where we're coming in about 15% below in projections in consecutive months. It's worth noting, it's typical in the first quarter for revenues to sometimes be down. However, it appears that there is a slowdown, and with the Tri-Cities being one of the top 10 economies in the country, I think it's worthwhile to have at least something in place so that we're not scrambling if the trend continues. The auditor and his staff has provided me with a series of potential options. The board could take this curb spending if we get in a pinch. I've also looked at it from our perspective and things that we may or may not want to do. So you will have, as part of your packet today, the anticipated Franklin County budget shortfalls for fiscal year '25 and '26. I would note that it's in draft mode, but we are going to get this out to all the elected officials and department heads, so that they're aware of a timeline of things that we're looking at doing. It would all be your gentleman's call to make on when and how and why we implement it. So just something for Judith Chu on. I would like to put a workshop together in the near term, maybe not on the evening meeting, now that we've continued this hearing, but maybe on the 28th. I think we should do a workshop and have it in the open, and really have good commentary from elected officials and department heads and anybody that wants to speak to it. But in there, you will have some things that I think you'll find that would be good practice just in general when it comes to utilizing some of the talent and the people that we have here to come to conclusions that might provide strategies for our financial position, not just now, but I think in the future, too. I spoke with McKinstry, and I've scheduled them, actually, our clerk of the board, our magnificent clerk of the board, Teresa Alvarez, has scheduled them for a workshop on the 28th. We, you've heard a little bit of it, and it will be a little bit of a growing pain. We have changed the way that we manage the agenda, and with that, how we post. And I would like to just take a little bit of time. I know it's my update time. I hate to just blabber on, but I'd like to kind of discuss why that was taken. Kind of the way that it works now, because we have a lot of external folks that do present, what ends up happening is you're chasing down documents that sometimes are still in draft form, that sometimes are incomplete, that sometimes might be completely different, and you're getting that out to the public before a meeting. And again, it's the clerk of the board, myself, usually chasing down these documents to try and stumble into getting it out soon enough, and relying on folks from outside or from different parts of the government to be able to do so. There's no legal requirement that we do it, and so what makes just the world of sense to me is to post the agenda, and then, and this is the clerk's idea, which I think is brilliant, and have like a, a document dump for when we actually have heard what materials were presented after the meeting's over, so that everybody will still have access to the materials. In a circumstance like this, I would ask, you know, like the planning department, for example, to just directly, if, if they're asked for materials, to share those materials if it's appropriate. But to put the onus on the commissioner's staff to load other people's documents that many times are in draft status, I didn't think was a very good use of our time. I, I still don't think it's a good use of our time, and it's created situations where, because we'll put out documents that are in draft status, those will be different by the time the meeting rolls around, and so you've got two different documents, and there's already been confusion as to how come this was the packet that I got, and this is the one that was presented? You eliminate all that, and you say, here is exactly what was presented to us. It's a legal requirement that we do the posting. It isn't that we just gather everybody else's documents to do so. And I think that that would be the most conducive way to proceed. So I just wanted to give that background. You also have that, everything I just said in a document that I handed to you today, too, and this will go out also when we're done with this meeting. That'll inform people of how to be put on the agenda. The way that it'll work is very simple. There's already an, an agenda email address. It'll be sent there. The ASRs will still go to the clerk and I. Any supporting documentation will go to the clerk and I. It'll give us time on the front part of the week to be able to discuss these things, rather than chasing it down right before the meeting starts. And so I think that's important. But I just wanted to make you gentlemen aware of that. Tribal notification letters went out as it pertains to the Hapo HVAC project, so we are looking at a shovel-ready start date by, I believe, Teresa, is it June 9th? Yeah, I think it's June 9th. And I also had a call with Mike McCall, and I think that you gentlemen were CC'd on a, on a email, that HWL will be coming in next week as well to make a couple of requests and give an update on what things are going on out there. And I was going to leave this as my last one. A reminder that next week's meeting is a night meeting. We already covered that. And then I want to thank Council Briggs. Jeff Briggs and I attended the Civil Service Commission to answer questions and to actually just kind of partake in what I think was just a great group of gentlemen that are here to serve the public and just kind of looking for an update as to what's going on. So thank you to Council Briggs for that. If you have any questions for me, let me know. And like I said, we do have, I think, an executive session here at about 10:30 that we need to go into, and that's my administrator's report for this week.
Thank you, Mr. Danzel. Commissioner Ballen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Went on a job site walk at the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery, and appreciate seeing that, making rapid progress. I suppose there was probably three to four dozen workers there, working on about every facet that you can imagine, from electrical to insulation, to concrete exterior, to just preparation and working in that, that project. It's good to see the, the progress they're making there. And January 1st is rapidly approaching, and I know they've had a number of challenges with procurement in different ways, and are working, working their way through that. Also, immediately following that, had the opportunity to go and tour the Juvenile Justice Center and the, the remodel makeover build that they're doing there, and appreciate Robert Blaine from Benton County providing that opportunity for me. Got to, got to meet with former Franklin County Deputy Gordon Thomason, is now the director there, and got a, a pretty thorough tour of that site. They were getting ready to do a 200-yard concrete pour, all in one pour with a new facility, and making really good progress there. And, and that is a, a facility that it's needed for our community, and glad to see the progress that they're making. Also, had Columbia River County's caucus meeting, and had a pretty thorough presentation by the Department of Ecology that surrounded water rights, exempt wells, and, and some of the, the challenges that are going through there. They, they have, they've had a, a project that provided some challenges and some conflicting information or conflicting rules within their, their, the way that they manage groundwater. And so, one thing that, in their presentation, that I asked them about, that it seems to be that instead of isolating the challenge, that they are providing more, more regulation instead of isolating the probleming and, and addressing it. They're, they're making the process more complicated, and that's disappointing and frustrating as somebody that, that deals with this kind of stuff very regularly. It seems like that, that every time there's a challenge arises, that we make it more complicated, not, not simplify it. And so I'm looking forward to the opportunity to talk with them further about that. Ben Franklin Transit Board meeting, and then yesterday spent half a day with Franklin County Emergency Management on a community emergency preparedness assessment with the Franklin, or with the state emergency management and the Washington Military Department, and just looking at our capacity and capability from all of our agencies that serve the public, from law enforcement to fire, to the Red Cross, to, to the Benton Franklin Health Department. And so just appreciated that opportunity, and, and, and as I continue to, to learn what the, all the different organizations and how that, that process looks. And, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullen.
Just a clarification question on your 200-yard
Concrete pour.
concrete pour. That's at the recovery center?
That's at the Juvenile Justice Center.
Justice, alright.
So on the backside, where they're putting all that new, new stuff. So I asked him about that, and he said they were going to start pouring at 3:00 AM, and they expected it to go for approximately 15 hours, a continuous process, until they had it all finished. So I've got to watch that big of a pour before, and it's a, that's, that's, it's pretty impressive. Takes a big crew to do that.
Yes. Alright, thank you. So last week, caught the tail end of the open house for Visit Tri-Cities. They're doing a fabulous job. They're working with Mike at the Hapo Center, trying to create more tourism and filling up the hotels and just bringing more economic stability to Tri-Cities. Also had meetings with Administrator Danzel about the budget discussions, and I think it's time that we get ahead of it now and be prepared to try to accommodate our lower sales tax incomes. And so, rather do it now than, than try to make a drastic change later. So, and that concludes my report for this week.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. So I also attended the Ben Franklin Transit meeting, and I brought up the fact that they have been putting posts out on the Facebook about their electric buses, and I noted that they have gotten a lot of negative responses from these electric bus posts about going into that aspect again, where people are saying, you got enough electric bus relics laying around the yard. You don't need any more. But they, they're being pushed into it by our state, of course, so. And our, our manager out there made, he wants it to be efficient and effective, and he's not in favor of it, but he's pushed into this. Sheriff put out a post on Facebook on the wire theft. I appreciate that. And I asked the citizens out there, if they see anything strange going on, please call the sheriff's office so that we can stop this wire theft. It's, on average, $1,000 a tower if they just lop off 20 feet. You can't just hook it back up. It doesn't reach. You got to get a whole new piece of wire, and it's a thousand, depending on the length of span, it can be even 1,500 bucks a tower. Like to also report, the Capital Press, a lot of good information this last week. It says, "A new study by University of California Davis estimates that a single wolf can cost a cattle rancher more than $160,000." One wolf. And then it also, and there's an article there in the back about the new system starts water delivery. The East Low 86.4 system is delivering Columbia River surface water to farmers in the Odessa subarea via the East Low Canal for the first time this year, instead of growers relying on declining deep well irrigation. This East Low 84.6 represents 5,500 acres. They also have it online for the 84.7, and the 80.6 systems are next. 84.7 will be 7,100 acres. The 80.6 system will be 580, 5,800 acres. Now, everybody's asking me, why are you in favor of this? This creates competition for you. There'll be other people out. No. What it does, it brings more people to the fight. And if we don't have people on our side standing with us, the declining farmer population is still declining. And unless we get more people to stand with us, we will be overrun. Also, an article in here about the supplies of cattle is at a 70-year low, and Secretary Brooke Rollins just implemented a suspension of live cattle, horse, and bison across the southern border because of the New World screw worm infestation that we took 30 years to recover from the last time it was in the United States. With that, there was another article about the increased heifer kill for slaughter. So all that means, folks, is your meat prices are going to go up. They're going to continue to rise, because we're at a 70-year low for population of beef. We're shutting down the border from importing beef. And I think that there's an opportunity here. If anybody wants to become a rancher, get, get in there and start buying some cattle now. I'm Mullen. What do you think?
I, I heard that first calf heifers just sold for $4,300 a pair.
That's incredible.
There was, there was second calf, a third calf, that was going for 5,700 a pair. I can't even wrap my mind around that.
So just get ready for higher meat costs. It's going to happen, and I would suggest that you do everything you can to help supply your family with protein source, and that's get some chickens, maybe buy you an animal and fatten it up yourself. But the prices in the stores are just going to continue to rise.
And just for reference, a cow calf pair, two years ago, sold for $1,500.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's how fast it's going up. Last thing I'd like to report is that it's an important day for me, because if, if it wasn't for this guy, my brother Kurt, I'd have never seen the NFL. He made me tough enough, beat me up every day so that I could be tough enough for the NFL. Today's his birthday. He's, he's 68 years old. Happy birthday, Kurt. That concludes mine, and I think we got a few minutes. Maybe, go ahead, Mr. Danzel.
Real quick, this has become a topic over the last week, so I'd like to memorialize this, and so I have a time for it, too, so I can kind of timestamp it. But I would ask that the board make a motion to authorize me to finalize the contract with Tri-Cities monitoring, just so it can be on the record. And I don't, does that have to be added as an agenda item?
I think, well, in its, in its current form, the Tri-City monitoring contract is, is drafted as a resolution, so the, the plan had been to bring it back to the board. Are you saying you want to sign it outside of a meeting without the board reviewing it?
That is, that's exactly it, because we've tried to do this now for a couple weeks, and I'd like to just get it done.
Well, and I think we've already made that move. We've already passed this, and it's not happening. So if we got to make another motion for to give you
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the agenda to add an action item.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I move
Just a minute, we got to vote on the
Getting in a hurry. Getting in a hurry here.
So, there's been a motion in a second to amend the agenda for an action item. All in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize Mr. Danzel, our county administrator, to negotiate and execute a contract with Tri-City monitoring on our behalf.
Second.
There been motion in a second for Mr. Danzel to do the authorization and the contract for Tri-Cities monitoring for our guard shack. All in favor say aye.
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 That happened at 10:29. Alright.
Okay, with that, we will recess into executive session. Mr. Briggs?
(inaudible)
Oh, excuse me. I always forget that second public comment. Yes. Is there anybody in the room for public comment?
County Commissioners, oh wait. I really appreciated the deliberation with this plot, the reasoning, the civilness, the navigating the difficulty of that plat to increase revenue and to also honor artifacts for Colville Tribe. I really appreciated that. That's what I believe the people and myself really do appreciate. But with regard to the shack, when I was in civil service, in Civil Commission, they're doing exactly the plan that I had. They did not wanna take any more deputies out of the corrections center and put them in the shack because of the strain at that time on available corrections officers. They're hard to find. They're jewels in the crown, really. And yet, they did. And the people supported it because our deputies taken oath to uphold the Constitution. I don't wanna put down people who work in the security business, but they do not. And I have witnessed people that work in the building scooting through and beeping and they don't check it. What if you have one disgruntled employee that beeps and then comes in here and does devastation? I don't want that to happen to you or to any people under this dome. And so, it's great difficulty because I wanna see our county thrive and, and work together. I object. Our county deputies and corrections people are a bar above because our Civil Service Commission makes those tests. I've corrected those tests, gained great insight into what their daily lives are. The people do not understand the disgruntled ship with the sheriff. I, I don't understand. The jail was running well and, and there's no transparency there. So, there, the things that I see out online are not helping you in the next year, which puts my heart at, at great distress that there may be such a change of administration. Don't wanna see that, actually. With regard to the documents that come into the agenda, the people wanna see them. And so, I don't wanna see her or any of you having to scramble around to take incomplete documents in draft form. But we can't see them after the fact of the meeting. So, I'd rather have a policy where you need to have complete documents if you wanna be heard by this commission. It's not a tall order. It should be expected and understood. Franklin County is a wonderful place where people are neighbors and they take exception for each other. They understand each other. And when each other makes mistakes, they throw the ball back to them. It's actually what made Michael Jordan's team one of the top teams. That's what I suggest we do more often. Thank you.
George Doc Stetter, South Landing Road. On your deal for Underwood subdivision, I didn't hear anything from the Yakamas or the Umatillas. All you guys talk about anymore is the Colvilles. The only reason they came down here at all was to rape and pillage the local Indians. They've got nothing to do with our area that we live in. They're 120 miles away. Who gives a damn what they think? You know, let's quit sending them crap that they don't need.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing nobody else come forward, I'd like to apologize because I'm the commissioner that made sure that we had two public comment periods and I keep forgetting the second one. So, I apologize. Now, Mr. Briggs, will you take us into executive session?
Sure, I'm happy to. Call an executive session for RCW 4231-101I for 30 minutes.
President would be the board, the clerk, the clerk of court is gonna be upstairs, and then myself, Mr. Sam Lloyd, and I believe our, our attorneys of this, by telephone.
Okay. So, should we call for this executive session? And, because we gotta move downstairs and we gotta assemble everybody and get them on the phone. So, we'll call the executive
On behalf of the board, I'm reconvening that regular meeting to extend it for 15 minutes under the same RCW The meeting is scheduled to resume at 11:21.
By the way, the civil service committee has been in the house.
This meeting is scheduled to resume at 11:31.
It is 11:21 and on behalf of the board, I'm reconvening the regular meeting to extend executive session for 10 additional minutes. Under the same RCW 4230-1101I, this meeting is scheduled to resume at 11:31. It is 11:21 and on behalf of the board, I'm reconvening the regular meeting to extend executive session for 10 additional minutes. Under the same RCW 4230-1101I, this meeting is scheduled to resume at 11:31.
Okay, we have come back from executive session with no decisions being made. We're back to the live meeting. So is there any action that we need to take?
No, sir.
So at this time, we will adjourn the meeting.